Welcome to Monday, April ninth Greeley-Evan School Board Meeting. This meeting will now come to order. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no recidivism, justice, and coram.
Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Present.
Mr. Haley.
Present.
Mr. Lydiak.
Present.
Mr. Matthews.
Present.
Ms. Pappas.
Present.
Dr. Richard.
Present.
Mrs. Solis.
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, this evening, as in other evenings, I like to mention the kind of the key words associated with our Innovation 2020 program, engage, empower, and inspire. And tonight, I want to focus on engaging from the standpoint of the new employee hiring that the board was able to kind of take a look at human resources, doing their job to bring in people who are prepared and are able to give their best to the district in various positions. But at the same time, I want to recognize that some folks are saying goodbye. At some point, it might be time to retire. And having given a number of years to the district, I think in both cases, we thank them for joining us or thank them for their many years of service. Under empower, I want to point out, and a couple of times, we'll be mentioning mill levy override money that is going out, being put exactly where we promised that it would be put, and to a tune of a good chunk of change for a variety of laptops and a variety of other activities. Something as romantic as a brand-new roof for a building, these things make some of us tear up a little bit because we've been waiting for the opportunity to do these things. So I want to point out that this really is an empowering opportunity for the school district to be able to start scratching off a few of the to-do items off of our long list of things to do. Also, I want to point out the inspiration, and for me, this evening, the inspiration comes in the form of members of our council of student representatives who happen to be filling up half the chamber. And they're going to be here this evening to just give an update of some of the activities they've involved in. They have existed as an organization in the school district since 2012. And I think most folks who have been paying any attention will recognize this is probably one of their strongest years. And they're in the process of being sure that next year is just as strong and has the opportunity to continue to grow and keep communication going within the youth in all of the school districts' high schools. And so we're excited always to have you guys come and do a presentation. So that's my word for inspiration. The next item is the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the board, and I'm not aware that there is such a person this evening. So we'll skip right along. Ms. Crane, do you mind sharing the work session report, please?
Board of Education President Roger Dewitt began the work session with comments and updates from the board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and future agenda items. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, Dr. Stacy Dattery, provided an update on the district unified improvement plan and responded to questions with the help of Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and K-8 Schools, Wes Tuttle, and Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, Dr. Rhonda Hannaford. And that concluded the work session.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the superintendent's report. And if we all look to where the superintendent ought to be, we will recognize that she is excused this evening. She's kind of given a hand to some family members out of state with some health situations. So we send her our best wishes, and we will blame her for anything that goes wrong tonight. The next item, our first action, will be the approval of the agenda. It's going to require a motion from a board member to consider this action.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Discussion or comment? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the consent agenda, and it's also going to require a motion for us to consider this.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments? Seeing none? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. As mentioned before, we have the opportunity to invite the Council of Student Representatives to drop by every once in a while and let us know how things are going. And here is your cue, ladies and gentlemen, from the council. Would you mind invading the upper space of the chamber and introducing yourselves and then taking a few minutes for your report? We're always delighted to have you here. And we certainly have time for you to each calmly state your name. Thank you.
All right. My name is Bennett Mueller. I'm a senior at Greeley West High School.
My name is Gabby Ortiz, and I am a senior at Early College Academy.
My name is David Melendez, and I'm a senior at Early College Academy.
I'm Zaleen. I'm also a senior at ECA.
My name's Kyra Post, and I'm a sophomore at Frontier Academy.
I'm Dallas Brown. I'm a sophomore at University.
I'm Mackenzie Hora. I'm a junior at University.
I'm Liz Baylon, and I'm a senior at Greeley West.
Welcome, you guys. Bennett, sir, are you our first presenter?
Yeah, so I'm just going to introduce the council. As Mr. Dewitt said, we're here to kind of grow the high schools and unite them. So first, we're going to have Kyra go ahead and update us on some progress.
So a couple of meetings ago, we had a guest speaker, Janet Alcorn, come and talk to us about leadership. And I thought it was really interesting. She talked to us about how leadership is not only just you being able to take control of a group of people and lead them in the direction, but also being able to give everybody in that group their own part of the leadership, and that it's not just you personally leading. And also, that not every leader is going to be outspoken and like lead the whole group, but there are also quiet individual leaders who can set a good example and show people what they need to be doing instead of speaking and being more outspoken.
We are approaching the end of our year. Our last meeting is May 1st, and we invited all of our new members that are going to be at the board to like come find out what's happening. We're going to elect our new officers. And...
So I just want to fill yous in on our last event and its success. We had, our last event, we had made blankets for United Way, as well as dog toys for the Humane Society, and kindness trucks that we were able to put all over town, as well as cards for our veterans. And the success, we had a great success bringing students there with roughly 40 students
So many of you were at actually the Success Foundation breakfast, and we had the privilege of actually joining you guys and being able to escort our guests to their seats.
So for our next event, we're going to have a game night for all the schools to come. It's going to be like board games and sports such as volleyball and dodgeball. And then at the end, it's going to be a newspaper fashion show. So that will be fun. And then this will actually be our last event of the year. So we're hoping for a good turnout.
So in two days, actually, we're going to be going down, a few of us, to the Capitol in correspondence with the Colorado Association of School Boards. So that's going to be myself and a few of us. And yeah, I'm excited. I'm not fully sure what we're doing, to be honest, but yeah, should be good.
So the end of the year is coming up, and we'll be having a banquet, which will be held on May 4th. And at this banquet, we'll be passing the torch to the new officers and giving honor cords to the seniors. It will also be potluck style and...
Oh, yea.
So these are the invitations, and we'd like you guys to be there if you can make it.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that's what we've done and what we're planning to do coming up here soon. So yeah, that's the update for us.
Well, I'm glad you included this because I didn't want you to cancel this, saying that this is the last thing. And we're looking forward to participating. But I also want to just say thanks for all the work you've been involved in. And it's our first graduating class from Early College Academy. And so that's a big deal. So thank you very much for carrying that brand-new tradition forward. Comments from board members? Anybody want to pick on anyone tonight? Okay. Oh, look out.
No speed.
Put your helmets on. Mr. Haley has a comment. Please, sir.
It takes a lot of guts on your part to step to the front and to lead. And I agree with Ms. Probst that sometimes leaders aren't the most vociferous people within a group. And it's obvious that each of you has grown, no matter what your verbal set is. And so you should all be very proud of the fact. And I think the thing that is, another thing that's very exciting is that in our society, it's really, really easy to have divisions, I go to U-High versus Greeley West or ECA. And instead, you've come together as a district, and that's something that warms the hearts of all of us as board members. And we're very, very appreciative of the things that you do. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, you guys. Now, the rest of this meeting is full of exciting procedural actions and policy evaluations. So you probably want to stick around unless you, I don't know, have homework or something, in which case it might be good to see the outside of the door as soon as you could. But thanks for coming. You're welcome to stick around.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. See you in a week or so. Well, as promised, there's some quite exciting procedural discussions up ahead here for the next few moments, board members. And Ms. Bonsler, CFO, is in a position to be able to defend herself or explain things to us if it comes to that. I don't know. Megan, if you have something already prepared, just set the stage a little bit, but then go right ahead, and then we'll start approaching these items one at a time.
I do just have a brief sentence or two about each of these policies. So if you want to start off with the first one, then I'll tell you what it's all about.
First read of policy, J-F-A-B-E, Students in Foster Care.
So this is a first read of a new policy. You will see a theme in all of these policy revisions tonight that we're getting rid of NCLB, No Child Left Behind, and ushering in the new era of ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And so this first policy, Students in Foster Care, is to reflect the changes in ESSA, identifying what we need to do to take care of our students in foster care.
Dr. Richard.
How different is this policy from what our current practices are?
You know, I think our practices are just very much in line with this. It's just we did not ever have a formal policy around what we do.
Well, we can go ahead, I think, to, unless there are other comments, we can go ahead to revisions for policy, EEA, Student Transportation. And we do need to remove the "No Child Left Behind" references in our current situation. And there is an ESSA focus. Right now, it is an action item, so I'll ask for a motion from someone to be able to consider this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the revisions to policy, EEA, Student Transportation as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Anything deeper that you feel we need to hear about?
This one is pretty straightforward. It is just removing that NCLB reference.
Comments, questions? We've had the chance to look through this material. So thanks very much for that. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item, revisions to policy, GCE, GCF, Professional Staff Recruiting and Hiring. And I do have a feeling that there's ESSA insertion and NCLB removal, and a Title I reference that needed to be shifted a little bit to make sure it conforms to ESSA. Something else on that?
You're absolutely right. As you may remember, under NCLB, we had this designation of highly qualified. So our teachers had to be highly qualified. ESSA removes that requirement, and so it puts the requirement onto the state to determine whatever the requirements are for teachers in that state.
So to consider this, we'll go ahead and get a motion on the floor, please.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the revisions to policy, GCE, GCF, Professional Staff Recruiting, Hiring as Presented.
Second. Thank you both. Do we already have a sense of what the state's going to be talking about in the absence of highly qualified?
I think that really the rules are not changing a whole lot. I think, Ms. Overton can attest to that, that really the rules aren't changing. It's just a simple policy procedural matter of shifting that responsibility to the state.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'd be glad for a roll call. Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is revision to policy, GTA, Classified Staff Positions. It's an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the revisions to policy, GTA, Classified Staff Positions as Presented.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Thank you both. Ms. Bonsler.
This is pretty much the same as the previous policy, only this applies to the classified staff in our schools. I will say that as the state currently exists, there is not a lot of requirements on paraprofessionals, but that is a conversation that is ongoing with the HR folks. And so I would expect in the future that there will be some requirements around that at the state level. As a district, we do have requirements for our classified staff, and those will stay the same, and there's nothing to change at this point.
Thank you. Board members at peace with this particular action? Glad to ask for a roll call. Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. This next item does require a motion. It's revision to policy, GDE, GDF, Classified Staff Recruiting and Hiring. Be glad to hear a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the revisions to the, to policy, GDE, GDF, Classified Staff Recruiting, Hiring as Presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Ms. Bonsler.
So this one, as you can see, removes the "No Child Left Behind" reference. And you can also see that we inserted something around the Fair Credit Reporting Act. If we were to ever use that data in any background check, we need to notify the personnel involved. We currently do not do that, but in case we were ever to do that, we, of course, would follow the law. And then the hiring, that paragraph is really just to replicate the nondiscrimination clauses that we have really throughout the rest of our policies.
And it just reiterates it in this policy. Essentially, nothing new there, since our last update. Perhaps a roll call? Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, revision to policy, KBA, District Title I Parent Involvement. We do need a motion to consider this particular item.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the revisions to policy, KBA, District Title I Parent Involvement as Presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Some new focus with ESSA with respect to parent involvement.
Yep, that's exactly right. And as you all know, this is a high priority in our strategic plan. And so parent involvement, of course, will be getting a lot of attention as we move forward.
Comments, questions? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is a second read and repeal of policy, GTA, Title I Para Professionals. It's a motion I'd be glad to get at this time.
I move...
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six repeals policy, GTA, Title I Para Professionals as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Ms. Bonsler.
So the sole reason for that policy was around NCLB and those requirements. And since that does not exist anymore, we don't need that policy.
Okay. Sounds like a wild idea to get rid of something we don't use anymore, but let's just see what we can do here. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Lovely. Thank you very much, Ms. Bonsler. I appreciate it. What if I missed some? Oh, looks like Rhonda Solis wants to say something. Excuse me, ma'am.
I just want to thank all the staff for doing all this work to make sure that we are up to date and everything is current in the way it should be. I know it takes a lot of work to go through all of this, so please know that we greatly appreciate it.
I'm glad you sat next to me so you could make sure I pay attention to the lights every once in a while. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This next item is the District Unified Improvement Plan, and we've had an opportunity to kind of chew on this material. Dr. Dattery, our Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, is here to kind of go through this in part again for us to see if there are comments or questions. But this is an action that is required by the state of Colorado, so some of us think we probably ought to consider that action. It is a, it is an action item, and we will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Wold County School District Six approves the District Unified Improvement Plan as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Dattery, welcome back.
Thank you.
And I think for the next few minutes, you're going to be standing right there for a string of presentations, but thank you for this, and you're free to take the microphone.
Well, thank you, President Dewitt and members of the board. Tonight, I do bring to you the District Unified Improvement Plan as an action item for your consideration. The District UIP, as we like to shorten it down to, is in alignment with the requirements set forth by the state of Colorado and within the District Performance Framework rating of accredited with an improvement plan. As such, the District UIP brought to you tonight includes the action plan associated with our identified performance challenge. The Priority Performance Challenge identified in the UIP centers around supporting our students who are learning English as a second language to attain proficiency at the state expectations in English Language Arts and Math, and support them in achieving English Language proficiency at the expected rate as set forth by the state of Colorado. In addition, it includes a focus on students with a disability to support them to attain proficiency and reach expected growth in both English Language Arts and in math. With the work that we have been engaging in over the past two years, we have seen some emerging positive trends in our elementary DIBELS data, in our middle school English Language Arts and Math data, and our graduation rate data. As a result, we will continue to focus on the initiatives of the strategic plan that will continue to improve our student outcomes. As a district, we recognize that there are three areas of focus that we need to continue to develop. These are identified in the UIP. First, we will develop, articulate, and implement a comprehensive, multi-tiered system of support that establishes a system of universal, targeted, and intensive support to meet all the needs of all of our learners in the system. We will also continue to develop teachers and administrators' skills to effectively support all learners, including students who are learning English as a second language or those that have a disability. We will support them in all content areas and our elective courses so that students have access into all grade-appropriate level content. And finally, we will redesign the core instructional program model to support English Language learners and students with disabilities so that they have access to grade-level content. Three major improvement strategies were therefore identified to address these areas of focus. These also are included in the UIP. They include, the first one is to implement the master plan of effective EL instruction across the district. The second is to examine our current practices and programs and explore ways to more effectively design and implement quality programs and models in all classrooms. And finally, to develop and implement comprehensive as well as sustainable professional learning systems for our teachers and our leaders. The complete set of action steps and associated with these improvement strategies is found, can be found, rather, in your board packet. This is a multi-year plan reflecting two years of improvement strategies and action steps, both this current school year and the coming school year. It builds upon the upward trends noted in our data, and it continues to focus on the direction set forth in our strategic plan, Innovation 2020. In addition, the District Accountability Committee provided input during their regularly scheduled meetings and examined the trend data and determined strategies that would be most helpful to pursue as we wrote the District UIP to support student learning. Upon your approval tonight, the District Unified Improvement Plan will be sent to the Colorado Department of Education to be placed on SchoolView for public display. Thank you for your consideration of the District Unified Improvement Plan, and I will take any questions or comments that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Just to let the community understand, we've had a little time with you to conversation, for a conversation and some questions, but this is such an important document, and it so reflects the needs of our district, that there'll be a few more questions before we wrap things up tonight. Ms. Pappas, please.
I don't necessarily have a question. I just want to say that this plan, for me, is such a synthesis of the practice that has been in place for a long time, and the, just the focus with our strategic plan, the practices that are going to provide that support for every student to be successful. And probably most important, importantly for me, is the collaboration with CDE on the MTSS work. I think that will make a difference in our district, so I appreciate that you are making that. And then the other is, of course, the English Language learners and the focus on making sure that they all have access to grade-level content. So I appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work, but it's exciting. It's really exciting. And the other thing I would say is, it's a district, it's a district plan, but yet, as you mentioned earlier, the school plans match this, and each building has the autonomy and empowerment to be able to fulfill this at their, at their need, with their needs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Richard, please.
Just a follow-up from our earlier discussion. You had mentioned that about 75% of the schools had chosen to start implementing this plan this year. So what's the timeline for the other 25%?[1761.11] So, what's the timeline for the other twenty-five percent?
They'll begin with the start of this coming school year and the eighteen-nineteen school year, and that will start in August for them, and they'll be coming and doing a kickoff day and really digging in and doing the work that aligns with their school focus, so they'll begin that work soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the other topic that keeps coming up is access to grade-level content.
Yes.
And as a kind of a significant shift that we, you know, that we want to make sure is in place, would you talk a little bit about why that is significant, how it aids students in achievement?
So, what we know is that all of our students, the vast majority of our students, will be expected to take the state assessment, and that is on grade-level content, and that our job as a public institution is to ensure that all of our students are able to perform at expected levels of achievement on those tests, on those state assessments, and if they are not at that grade level in a particular year, that they are making the growth so that they do achieve that expected achievement level. Knowing that in the past, we were not providing all of the systems that would support all of our students to actually have access to that grade-level content in any given year, that that was compounding what we were seeing in our data, and noticing that in particular was having the greatest effect in holding some of their students, particularly those that are learning English as a second language and students with disabilities, that they were not, while it was part of the system that they would accelerate growth and accelerate into grade-level content, in actuality, what we were noticing is that they were not actually getting access to that grade-level content. And so, we had to really take some time last year and implement this year a different model of instruction that is pushing our resource teachers in, our special education teachers, our EL teachers, and in some cases, in title schools, our intervention teachers, in with the general education teacher so that they can come alongside and support our students to have access to that grade-level content in the grade in which they are at at that current time. So, that push has been different, that's a little different instructional model, while some of that has been occurring over the past prior years, it hasn't been at the scale that we have seen this year and that we will continue to see in the coming years. So, that's been a good, it's been good for our teachers and good for our students, so thank you. Does that...
That's, it's an exciting change to provide that opportunity, it's really an equity issue as well.
Absolutely.
Opportunity to learn, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayfley.
Thanks to you and all the people who are working on this curriculum. I find it refreshing that the pushed-in model has become much more prevalent, and the expectations of our students has risen, and consequently, they'll be much more successful. You know, I think in the past where we forced our students who weren't successful to have more and not better was something that hindered many as opposed to improve their skill sets, and consequently, this plan will lead to more successes, so congratulations to you and the people you're working with.
Thank you.
Ms. Pappas.
So, I just wanted to add with that grade-level content access, we have been able to visit schools this year on several visits, but particularly, the idea that, yes, of course, the testing is important, but the fact that our student, every student, that equity issue, has the opportunity to learn and be engaged in learning with their peers, I think that is the, actually, the most exciting thing that has happened this year, so thank you again for that.
Thank you.
Doctor, I have a couple of things, one of them is just pointing out that as a result of mill levy money, I think, we're looking at a summer program that's richer.
Absolutely, both after-school programs and summer school.
And so, we've got an opportunity to say, well, money doesn't do everything, here's something money can do for us, and that is guarantee that kids who really haven't had as much time.
Right.
You know, before they came to school perhaps, engaging in the learning process, they can make up some of that lost time.
Yes.
And get a lunch and move on with their next year's work. So, I want to point out another positive consequence of the voters who supported our mill levy override and a very specific immediate return. The other aspect for this, and a couple of us were discussing, the challenge that our staff is being asked to face in saying, "We haven't met all of our goals, we haven't been all things to all people, we've got some obligations," I am a cup-half-full, cup-half-empty guy at this moment, saying, "This is great, we have this opportunity to understand now what it's going to take." And on the other hand, we're hiring maybe some new employees who don't have the background that they need, and maybe people that have been with the district for a while, for one reason or another, haven't really been brought in through training, and so this is a real challenge, but can you outline a little bit what the state of Colorado has been offering? Because, you know, of course, they're the ones telling us, you know, "You better clean up your act, and we intend to, and we know we need to." What is their involvement as we take this on?
With our District Unified Improvement Plan?
Yeah.
There's a couple of different things that I can outline. One, in terms of very deep involvement with our schools that are in priority improvement, we have been engaged as a leadership team with both at the district level and at the schools that are in these categories of improvement, and working alongside CDE staff and Turnaround Network and Turnaround Network Leader Grants. So, with that, with those opportunities, has come additional training, additional support at the leadership level, as well as then that moving into the teacher, the teacher, you know, building that capacity and really supporting at the classroom level the instruction and the practices that are really going to make a difference. So, that is one way in which the state has really supported us in this work of changing practices and really identifying what are the things that will make a difference and supporting us. I would additionally say with the MTSS, that is another area that has been outlined in the UIP as well as in our strategic plan, that we are engaging in a leadership team approach in partnership with the Colorado Department of Education, and working to really build what are those system-wide, district-wide systems that will make a difference and support our schools in various ways. So, those are probably two of the main areas of focus that the state has really come in and helped us. Additionally, we have contracted with WestEd as a district to come and support us with specific practices around our English language learners, and that implementation of this year really supporting the work of instructional strategies that have been implemented across all the schools that have implemented this year in year one, as I mentioned, seventy-five percent of those schools, and then the remainder this coming school year. So, those have probably been those three primary levers of support that have really supported our district so far this year.
Are we expecting that that twenty-five percent will be able to look to some of the seventy-five percenters as mentors?
Oh, absolutely, yes, and they already do.
Had a year run this, and, you know, so nobody is really separate from one another, but I mean, there's this small cadre of schools that are taking this on, and we don't necessarily have to send them very far away to get a good example of successful programming.
Absolutely, and I will tell you, two of the schools that we'll be implementing this year were Summit Schools that implemented Summit this last year, so they really needed to get that up and going, and then coming along with the EL implementation this year makes sense, it is right in alignment with that year-two implementation for them of their Summit programs, and, yes, they have the support of their colleagues who meet frequently and support each other on a weekly basis, if not daily, so very confident to say yes, the support.
Thank you for that information.
Absolutely.
Other comments? I think we are in a position now to ask for a roll call vote on the District Unified Improvement Plan.
Mr. Dewitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Dattery, you know you get to stay there, and it's my pleasure, if I may, to, since Dr. Pilch is elsewhere, I'll just go ahead and say, welcome to my colleague and friend, Pepper Mueller, who's the president of the DAC, District Accountability Committee, and you two are both going to be sharing the opportunity to let us know about the District Accountability Committee Budget Recommendations. It's a, one of the many tasks DAC takes on, and that's looking from the standpoint of, tell me, staff, parents, community members, somebody else from that, in that DAC?
No, that's you, those three target areas, yes.
That they've got their minds together over the course of many meetings and have some suggestions, and I think it won't surprise you, Ms. Mueller, to find out that we're already going to be acting, potentially acting, on some of the things that the DAC has encouraged us to do. But I, once again, get out of the way and offer you the microphone, please.
Well, thank you, President Dewitt. As you mentioned, one of the District Accountability Committee's responsibilities is to make recommendations to the local school board regarding the spending of school district funds. So, in preparation for making this recommendation to you this evening, our DAC members have worked on the District Unified Improvement Plan, so that outlines that area of focus. They've also been very intimately involved in understanding the inner workings of Innovation 2020. They've also gained a deeper understanding of the district priorities and the challenges through the discussions of our superintendent's forum that is held each month at our monthly meetings, as well as with our chief financial officer, Megan Sponsler, who has come and shared what some of those district priorities and funding priorities are in the district. So, here with me tonight to present the findings to you is our president, Pepper Mueller. She will present the top recommended budget priorities that were calculated from the District Accountability Committee, so thank you, Pepper.
Thank you, board, for having me here. I wanted to let you know it's been a privilege to serve on the DAC this year, and I have learned a great amount. After spending a considerable amount of time learning throughout this year, and then discussing these areas of focus at the last meeting, the DAC made recommendations regarding the budget for next year. The committee ranked their priorities on a scale of one to four, with one being low priority and four being a high priority. The total response scores were tallied to gain an overall prioritization, with the highest total score being seventy-two. The highest recommended priority for DAC was to attract, hire, and retain high-quality teachers and staff to better compete with surrounding districts, which earned a score of sixty-eight. The next three priority items were to address urgent deferred maintenance issues, reduce class size where feasible, and support professional development for all staff so that they can increase their effectiveness in supporting all students to be academically successful. The bottom three priorities, which earned a significantly lower score, were centered on providing additional learning and assessment materials and equipment, as well as additional support for newcomer students and supporting funding for parent engagement activities. There were then additional recommendations that were made from DAC members that are listed in your board handout. While we understand this is just one piece of the budget process, we hope that you will strongly consider our recommendation as representatives from all the different schools across the district. We have become familiar with the budget constraints we must work within, and we believe these priorities will further support our teachers and our students to be successful. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mueller, appreciate your time, and all the time that your colleagues on DAC have invested in the district to come to this and to continue to do the other work that DAC does.
Roger.
Yes, ma'am, I was going to call on you, actually, I didn't see a note, but I was at you on my list of things to do, since you are our board representative. Dr. Richard, if you don't mind, go right ahead.
I have the privilege of being the liaison for the board to DAC, and Pepper, I just want to thank you for serving on the DAC for a number of years, but also for your leadership this year. It has, it's, you've really made the meetings meaningful and well-organized, and your leadership is really, really appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I don't know what your time schedule is, we met your son earlier this evening as part of the Council Student Initiative, but we're about to engage in an action in this next item that may give you a sense of some thank you for the work that you contributed to this outline of the budget priority. So, if you'd stick around, that'd be great, otherwise, we'll let you know how it went.
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. And thanks, Dr. Richard, I really did have your name on my list, I just didn't get that far down. Dr. Dattery, if you don't mind sticking around, we have some more work to do, and it is the Instructional Technology Purchase Recommendation, which is an action item, and it is something that we'll need a motion for, please.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the Instructional Technology Purchase Recommendation as presented.
Second. Thanks to the three of you. Dr. Dattery, come right ahead with the Instructional Technology Purchase Recommendations, please.
All right, thank you, I'll just... All right. Thank you. So, thank you once again, President Dewitt and members of the board, for allowing me a few minutes to share some of this information with you, and this is, as you said, an action item on our Instructional Technology Purchase Recommendation to you all this evening. I will share with you the purpose for the recommendation, the process that the committee has gone through to get to this time to you this evening, and the implementation timeline for these purchases, should they be approved. So, due to our generous voters, as you mentioned earlier this evening, President Dewitt, that passed our mill levy override, we are now in a position to enact a five-year replacement cycle of our technology devices. This purchase is directly tied to our Strategic Plan, Innovation 2020, Goal One of Student Learning and Achievement, and particularly in the area of Priority One, Provide a Personalized Learning Experience for All Students. As we began to review our needs in the district for device replacement, several schools rose to the top of the list to purchase new devices. Given the amount of funding to utilize this spring, Greeley Central High School and Greeley West High School were top priority as the last time that they had devices refreshed was in the 2008-2009 school year. The replacement purchase will refresh all computers in these schools, their document cameras, projectors, and printers, and additional devices will also be purchased at all three of our comprehensive high schools to expand, rather, to expand our blended learning in both Math and English Language Arts classrooms. These will be classroom sets of devices so that while in class, every student will be able to access a digital device as well as digital content. Once the schools were identified to begin the replacement cycle, we began the process in January by developing the request for proposal and put it out for prospective vendors to respond and reply. The request for proposal closed in February, and the results of the vendors that responded were reviewed by our Office of Information Technology. In March, the devices were analyzed by our OIT staff, and they were reviewed by the staffs at Greeley West and Greeley Central. In addition, lead department staff members from both of our high schools provided input, they asked questions, and they made recommendations about the devices and the vendors to select that would be most beneficial to them in the classroom. Vendors were then selected, and finally, in April, the final cost proposals were developed, and we are here to present to you this recommendation this evening. The total recommendation for your approval this evening is $1,724,346.48. This includes the purchase of 2,818 Chromebooks and Google licenses for students, it includes 418 HP desktops that are both for students or for teachers, 877 HP laptops that'll be both for students as well as teachers, and various HP monitors and accessories that will support the learning environment. The breakdown by total amount spent is on this slide for each school, along with the total for each of these line items. Should this purchase be approved by you this evening, the implementation will begin immediately in April, as items will be purchased and begin delivery. In the months of May and June, device preparation will first begin for Greeley West High School, and they will be delivered and set up so that they have them for the start of the new school year. And then in June and July, Greeley Central High School devices will be prepared, delivered, and set up so that they too will have them for the start of the new school year. The entire project will be complete by August 8th of 2018. I want to thank you for your consideration this evening of the Instructional Technology Request for both Greeley Central and Greeley West High Schools, and I also want to give a big thank you to Joe Ronenberg, he is our Director of Office of Information Technology, as well as to our finance folks, both Megan and Mandy, who, without that team, we wouldn't be able to get this purchase to you this evening. So, Joe and his staff have done an amazing job of working under considerable time compression, and again, the support from finances is incredible, so thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. You actually may be allowed to walk around the building now.
Okay.
But thanks for staying around in case there are some comments or questions. But, but thanks for staying around in case there are some comments or questions.
Absolutely.
I'm just anticipating there might be. Dr. Richard?
Well, and a, a thank you also to our voters for the MLO override dollars, because you look at an expenditure of one point seven million, and prior to this, it's always been, if we do this, then what won't we be doing? And so, you know, we're moving into that time when we are able to do the things that we know we need to do. And I guess it's just a little reminder to say that this technology is not over the top. If we haven't refreshed since the two thousand eight, two thousand nine school year, we're not pushing that edge of, you know, above and beyond technology. This is essential technology. And thank you so much for, once again, I know that we are spending that one point seven million in the most economical and efficient way. So, thank you all for being a part of that.
Thank you.
Obviously, I'll be voting in support.
Oh.
Suspense.
Ms. Solis?
I know that, I, we've heard from parents that get concerned about, you know, having a computer in front of their kiddos during the school hours. But I think it's really, really important for parents to understand where the shift of the jobs are going. I mean, even those regular jobs of automotive, and I just talked to someone at the Success Foundation who's, you know, in the business sector, and he was saying, even those manufacturing jobs, we're looking for those types of workers with additional computer skills. Everything is kind of going that direction. So, if we're really serious about making sure that our kiddos are either college or work-ready, then we have to make sure that the technology is in their hands, they know how to use it, and they're able to go into a business. I just recently got a new job, and I went from an office that used some technology to where everything is paperless now. So, it's in every sector, and so, it's really, really important that parents understand that these skills are very necessary, and these kids just get this stuff so much quicker than we do. And it's, it's going that direction. There isn't any stopping it. And if anything, the jobs that we had yesterday are going to be those same jobs with additional computer skills that are needed. So, thank you for putting this all together, and I'm glad that we're doing this for our kiddos. Thank you.
Comment, or a question, I guess, I'm making an assumption, but you can let me know the truth. The, the, the classroom sets of these devices, is this, will that provide a one-to-one?
Yes, in those classrooms, yes. So, it's thirty-eight devices, correct. Thirty-eight devices in each of those classrooms. And so, in each, so it's about, it ranges anywhere from eight to ten classrooms of either math and/or language arts classrooms in the schools. So, it won't be that the student will take that device with them to, say, a social studies classroom right now, but it does provide, there are devices in the social studies classroom, but this provides thirty-eight in each of those math and language arts classrooms, which, yes.
Well, we've had no budget to do this.
Correct.
So, we, we're looking at one another in amazement and saying, this is an opportunity to do the things we have thought about doing someday, if ever we could, and the mill levy override has made this, this a reality. It's a remarkable change in the way that, with that we're finding ourselves operating. Mr. Haley?
Unlike Ms. Solis, I'm a technological immigrant, and every time I touch my computers, I tend to break them. And Mr. Ronenberg knows that from my years at Greeley West, which I appreciate. Since we're increasing the number of devices, are we increasing the number of people to service those devices and make sure they're working appropriately?
That's a great question. And at this time, that, those talks and those discussions have been a part of our cabinet-level discussions, but there has been no commitment to that at this time. We're really trying to be very careful about where all those dollars are spent, and certainly looking at, that's not a part right now of, of the mill levy discussion and, and not adding, you know, really needing to look at our total budget and seeing where all of those dollars are being spent as a part of our current conversation. So, I cannot commit to you tonight that that is something that we will be able to do for the coming year, but it is absolutely a recognition that we are adding more devices, that we have more devices now than we did even five years ago with our blended learning expansions that we've done in many of our schools, and that that is, that that necessitates the need to hire more support folks to, to support our teachers and our students with technology implementation. So, thank you for expressing that.
Well, with respect to the DAC, and I appreciate you sticking around, Ms. Mueller, because I'm just looking at the, at the recommendations from the Accountability Committee, and it wants us to deal with maintenance issue. And while there's a lot of maintenance issues, one of those aspects is keeping our fleet going for student computing. The, the support professional development, that's going to be an opportunity. Providing funding for social, emotional needs, well, that's going to be kind of an indirect one, but I mean, the access might be an option. But learning and assessment material purchase and equipment, and providing support even for some parent engagement, there could be an opportunity for getting some of those ports available to, to parents. And so, that, on top of getting a new roof on a couple of buildings, you know, we're spending some money that I think the members of DAC will be satisfied that we're listening and applying some of the suggestions right away from that presentation on the budget priority list. So, we just want to thank you again for, for the contribution to this discussion that gets us at this kind of historic point, where we're going to be able to decide to release money where we really see the learning being done. Other comments? It's going to be a roll call. Ms. Crane?
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. This is a big moment. Unfortunately, it also is the end of our meeting. So, thank you very much. We're adjourned.